Wondering, yeah. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Monday, August 25th, 2025 council meeting. Thank you for all being here this evening. Roll call, all councilors are present. Would you like to do the invocation this evening?
Yes, everybody would please join me in being the attitude of prayer. We pray for our country at all times, that all citizens are safe, healthy, and happy. We pray for wisdom for all those who guide and govern. Help this government body in every situation to know and to do the things that are right and just with soundness of judgment and making vital decisions. We pray for the peacemakers, that the Holy Life-Giving Spirit may ever dwell in the hearts, and the barriers of fear, suspicion, and hatred may fall. This we pray to the Holy Father, amen.
Everybody would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, item number five is our Declaration of Conflict of Interest. Is there anyone on the council who would like to declare one this evening? Seeing none? Item number six is public forum. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening? Please come up and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Benjamin Tucker. I'm at 53 Baird Road. Some of you may recognize me from my recent bid for city council, as well as the recent FOAA request that I filed with the city. I'm here today with this statement because of the fiscal recklessness that's been the police station project and the concern that my neighbors will be ones footing the bill for it. It is August 25th, 2025. The most recent publicly available information for this $10 million project dates back to November 2024. The radio silence on a project with this large of a sum of money involved is absolutely unacceptable, and in December, the council rejected a proposal to use the congressionally-directed spending dollars to reduce the scope of this project. It's baffling to me why a city government would not be taking every measurable effort to reduce this burden and to retain its citizens and attract more to live here. People are moving, it is becoming unaffordable, the state as a whole is becoming unaffordable, and we're rubbing salt in the wounds. What is further concerning to me is that throughout these recent discussions of design and budget, that there is a sitting councillor with a clear conflict of interest that has a partner serving on the police force that has not accused themselves from the votes. I do not believe, and I don't think many of you believe, that if this vote were to have, were to be had today for $10 million, that it would pass. Because of that, I believe that the most honest thing to do would be to send this back to referendum and let taxpayers vote on that again and see what the results are. Because I don't have a lot of faith that this would happen, I am again asking that this budget be reconsidered, that we can reconsider using that money to reduce the scope and the cost of this and to take this back to design. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Please come up and state your name and address.
My name is Bruce Hegelstein. I live on Coolidge here at Caribou. I'm going to continue a little bit with what this gentleman said about the police station. To start off with, I was on the original committee when it was all a concept to build a new police station, a public safety building. This was back when Dennis Marker, the previous city manager, was here. I was in my 60s then. I am almost to my mid-70s now, and we aren't any closer than we were when we started. This is ridiculous. This project should have been done and completed three years ago. The last meeting or communication about the police station and the status and architecture and so forth, I was here, the architect did a presentation, so forth. I have to admit, I was not impressed with the presentation that the architect did. And in my opinion, they are trying to upsell the project to get as many bells and whistles as I can, because it helps them from a financial standpoint. They were not listening to what the city council was asking them to do and requesting them to do as far as, as far as a design for the building. I am concerned, I was not, in my opinion, I was not impressed with the architect. I'm still not, and as far as communication about this project, it has gone dead. There has been nothing out there. I'm glad to see that it's on the agenda tonight. Hopefully, a lot of my questions and my concerns will be answered when this comes up on the agenda. But like I said, the way things are going, I don't know if I'm going to make it until it's finished. I mean, I'm almost in my mid-70s, and we started this thing when I was in my 60s. It's way too long. This isn't that big of a project. It should have been completed, put to bed, and moved on, and it's not there. We're not any closer than we were five years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. And just real quick, so that everyone's clear, I do want to mention this, and we will be having a discussion about this later on the agenda, but the committee meetings for the Public Safety Committee are open to the public. Any member of the public can come and sit and sit in on those meetings, and they're posted on the website with the date and time and the agenda. So I just want to make that clear in case people aren't aware of that, that those are open to the public. So anyone who's interested in the project should be watching. Anyhow, is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Please come up and state your name and address.
Good evening, everybody, tonight. How we doing tonight? I'm James Bacon. I have a building in Caribou. I know, this is the third time I've been to try to get this business started in Caribou. And I just want to start, I'm going to read to you what I've gathered. James Bacon, Bacon Holdings. Otherwise known as Bacon Cannabis. I would like to address the city council in regards to relocating my existing business into the city of Caribou. I have a growth facility, an adult-use growth facility I've been at three years. It's currently located in Prescott, has been for three years without any issues. I am from the city of Caribou, was the owner of Bacon Auto for 30 years. The business has been closed for several years now, and it has been listed for sale over three years. I haven't had one person look at it. So it has been listed, you know, my building is sitting vacant while I'm paying rent to another township. Equity I've built up over the years in this building. If something, if I can't move here, I'm going to end up losing the building. But I want to bring this business to Caribou. I'm from Caribou, I got to school in Caribou, I've been in this business here for years, and I know how hard it is to get stuff done in this town. And if you guys, you guys, I don't, I'm not saying anything bad about anybody, but this is, this, Caribou's tough, tough on anything to try to do. Over the years, I've tried subdivisions, this and that, to try to, to try to build up Caribou, and it was just a roadblock. I ended up having to do the subdivision in Washburn, where I did it over there, which I've sold, and now they're building houses there, and it's talking about 1.5 million dollars worth of houses that I wanted to do on Fort Road, but it wasn't, it wasn't feasible. I couldn't get it, couldn't get it done, anyway. So that's, all right. I need to move that facility to 173 Washburn Street. This is a legal, legitimate business, through the state of Maine licensed, through the state of Maine. I'm the only adult-use cultivation facility in Maine, or in Arustah County. I'm the only one. You've got the medical side, well, that's completely different than what the adult-use side. Adult-use means, a lot of people don't know, you need a card from a doctor to get your product from, say, a medical. Mine is a, is a, your identification card, 21 and over, just like alcohol, same thing. That's the difference between, and there couldn't be so much difference between the two. It's, it's just a whole other, other, other way that, we voted this in in 2018. The first facility went in, 2021 was the first license given out in Maine. It was in September, and then December, I got the next one. I've been working on this for years, anyway. I don't understand that you won't allow me a legitimate legal business to be in your city. And it's, you know, this doesn't make any sense to me, that, you know, the town, you have two medical retail facilities now and one cultivation facility. What makes it different that you guys allow that than for me to do my part of it? Adult-use marijuana, I got into this business because of the bad things that were going on in this, in the, in the medical side. And I'm not pointing names at anybody, but these guys don't have, there's no regulation on any of this that they're selling. I mean, I have testing, compliance. You wouldn't believe what it takes to do to actually sell my product compared to the other guys. Anyway, there's a lot of change coming through the state next year, they're going to try to get it more of an even playing field. But what, you know, I have people that, that, you know, they, they don't want to get a medical license, they don't want a doctor, they don't want to be on the Fed list for being, having a medical card and not having, be able to have a gun, and they want adult-use so that 21 and over get to go buy their cannabis. It's very simple. And the state is actually going to give you guys, if you opt in to this adult-use plan, they're willing to, to take the money, the 20,000 they're willing to give, to give out one of these licenses. And they're willing to give out 12% of excise. I don't know if you guys know, I pay excise tax, the consumer pays a tax. It's just, you know, 12% on what I'm doing a year and what I, I want to move to Caribou because my building is set up better and it's bigger. I'm running out of room over there, and I just would like to use my building in Caribou. I can't sell it, I can't use it. It doesn't make any sense to me. So I'm just going to go on here a little bit longer, I'm not going to bore you guys.
Just a couple more minutes, Mr. Bacon, because we do limit it to five minutes.
All right, so, but I'm just wondering why, I'd like to know why recreation's being disallowed and discriminated on. Why, why can they exist in Caribou and I can't? It doesn't make any sense to me. But, you know, 12% on just what I'm doing a year, that's looking at $30,000 to $40,000 to you guys in revenue a year, plus licensing. My license in Prescott is $3,000 a year, and they're going to give you guys the money to actually try to get at least one going and opt in. So that's all I wanted to say tonight, and thank you, and this is my third time, and I, I really, I really hope you guys think about this twice, or what do I have to do next? Planning board, or to let this, this happen? I mean, how can you stop a legitimate, legal, licensed business in Maine? It's going to be a point where the state's going to come in, they're going to make you guys do it. They're going to make you do it. So that's all I have to say, thank you very much. Good to see everybody.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we will move to item number seven, which are the acceptance of minutes from the regular city council meeting from May 27, 2025. Everyone had a chance to look those over? Yes. Okay. What are the wishes of the council?
I had one change. Page nine. About a quarter down the page, the motion made by Councilor Kelly, seconded by Deputy Mayor Smith, to check the box and to be able to operate his business. I believe that, that the wording "check the box" was eliminated from the amended motion because it wasn't valid. Nobody knew what it meant, and so I'm suggesting wording, changing the wording to the following. Motion was made by Councilor Kelly, seconded by Deputy Mayor Smith, to allow Richardson Remedies to operate his business until ordinances can be amended formally. Was that the intent of the motion, to everybody's recollection? That's what I recall.
I would think so.
I think that's accurate, Dan.
Okay.
Yep.
I believe so, yeah, we can back and... I'll second that motion, that we change that wording to reflect that.
Any other discussion on that? Bagley?
I'm sorry, was there a motion? I didn't hear a motion.
Did you make a motion?
I didn't know.
Thought you did.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, let me make the motion. I move that we amend the minutes for May 27th. On page nine, the text to read, motion was made by Councilor Kelly, seconded by Deputy Mayor Smith, to allow Richardson Remedies to operate his business until ordinances can be amended formally.
I'll second it.
Now is there discussion? Okay, Bagley?
Thanks. Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
If you have that in writing, can I get that for Danielle? After the meeting's over, it's just, I know that Danielle will want that.
I'll just tear the page. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, anything further on the minutes? Okay, what are the wishes of the council?
How do we phrase that, and make a motion that we accept the minutes with the amended version as was put forth by Councilor Bagley, Councilor Bagley, and voted on by this council?
That's great.
Okay, now I get a break. That was a lot of words.
A motion and a second, further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, item number eight is bid openings, awards, and appointments, and we do have under 8A, a bid opening for the Maine DECD Housing Opportunity Program. This has to do with an RFP, this is on page 14 of your packet. And Penny, did you want to just give a brief overview here?
Sure. So the city of Caribou was awarded a Maine DECD Housing Opportunity Grant to conduct a housing needs assessment in the city of Caribou, and a copy of the RFP is on the following pages. In response to the RFP, four bids were received from 300 Block of Oakwood, Ohio, Matrix Design Group of Niceville, Florida, North Star Planning of New Gloucester, Maine, and RKG of Boston, Massachusetts. A review panel of city council members, a member of the planning board and development committee, and members of staff convened on Friday, August 15th, to review their proposals and make a recommendation to the city council. The committee had questions about their top-rated proposal from Matrix Design Group. Those questions were sent and answered. The committee asked about in-person meetings and was given an additional cost of $3,000 to do in-person meetings. Their original budget was $39,000. Their revised budget, including in-person meetings, would be $42,000. The total project budget that was set for this project was $40,000. Those in attendance, also on the selection committee, can provide some insight into the proposal. And while everyone's listening, if you haven't signed in, please sign in, because our city clerk isn't here. So I need to make sure that she's got everything complete. So if you haven't signed in, please.
So I'll just comment that I participated in that, and I can tell you that it was very well-run. We had four very good qualified proposals that came in, it was hard to choose, but I can assure everybody, Matrix, the selected contractor, was in a class of its own above the rest of them. You're going to be really happy with their, with their work. We're, we're very excited about it, so, would you agree?
I would agree, 100%. They, they all were excellent companies, we were very excited to see so many interested parties show up that had great qualifications, but Matrix was standing out way above them beyond them.
So we're just looking at about $3,000 over budget, then?
Right, we would have to appropriate that next year, which the project isn't going to be finished until next year, anyway. And that can be done through the economic development.
Penny, did they get back to us about the, the technology that...
Yep, Eric sent out an email about that, that it's, it's not some kind of proprietary software or anything like that.
Excellent, okay.
So that was also good to hear. They also submitted their schedule, that might even be in the packet.
I didn't see.
An update of what the packet... Yep, I have all that.
Are there thoughts from the council? What are the wishes of the council?
You want to do it?
What's that?
Are you making a motion?
I can.
Oh, I wasn't sure, I was going to make it if you weren't.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the proposal from Matrix Design Group for the Caribou Housing Needs Assessment and Housing Action Plan in the amount of $42,900.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion on this? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, and I'll have Eric get back to them tomorrow.
Okay, we have nothing under public hearings and possible action items this evening, so we'll go to item 10, which is reports by staff and committees. And we have Giselle McDonald of Felch and Company here this evening to give our municipal audit presentation. So thank you for being here tonight.
You're welcome. Then you should have at your seats.
I see you all have the packet. I'm going to do a brief overview. If anybody has any questions, don't hesitate to ask, or if you want more detail. I'd like to first thank Penny and Carl for all the assistance they give us during the field work and during the audit. It's quite an undertaking to pull all those documents, answer all those questions that we have. Starting on page one, the pages are all numbered down in the right-hand corner. So pages one through three are the independent auditor's report. Basically, it says that the financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with the accounting principles that we use. A lot of words to say that, but that's what it says. The next few pages are what we call the management discussion and analysis. That is kind of a summary overview of what is in the financial statements. I'm going to skip ahead to page nine. It is the statement of net position. This includes all of the assets and liabilities of the city. It includes the fixed assets, the buildings, the roads, all of that, together with any debt that the, that the city has. It reports total current assets of $15.5 million, total assets of $32.4 million, liabilities of $2.3 million for a net position or equity of $31.1 million, 11.9 of which is unrestricted. The next page, exhibit B, is the statement of activities. You might think of this as an income statement. It starts with expenses and then works its way down to general revenues. There were total expenses of the city of just under $20 million. That was, those were, expenses were partially offset by program revenues, charges for services, things like that, of $5.2 million, leaving a net cost of $14.6 million, which was then offset by general revenues of $15.6 million, for a net increase of $1 million. The next exhibits, C through G, are various other presentations with greater detail and some reconciliations between the two. I don't usually go over these in detail. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Just on page 10, the change in net position.
Sure.
Could that be accurately characterized as cash?
It, it is accrual. It's accrual, and included in the expenses are charges for depreciation on the assets of the city. So that, well, there's another statement in here I'll go over that, that is the city's budget, and which might, it's going to look a lot different than this. And I know a question was asked last year about trends in the net position, and since 2021, it's been increasing a million to a million five per year.
Good.
So the next page that I'll go over is page 31. That is the budgetary comparison schedule. You had budgeted revenues of $18.8 million, for which you collected $18.4 million. Budgeted expenditures were $18.8 million, and you paid out $18.5 million. And when I say paid out, part of, part of those expenditures is what you set aside for reserves, the appropriations to the reserve, for future capital spending. So the actual capital spending resulted in lower expenditures by $323,000 for a net increase in the total fund balance of $179,000. That's very different from the million that we talked about before, but when you strip out the capital assets and you take out the debt and the pension liability and things like that, that are in that first presentation, this is basically cash basis. So it's close to a break-even, is what it says. There are additional reports in the back due to the type of audit that we do, because the city receives some federal grant, grant funding. We do what we call a compliance audit, and I'm pleased to report that we had no findings in connection with that. And that concludes my presentation, unless there are questions.
Does anybody have questions?
No.
Well done.
Thank you so much.
It's amazing, all these numbers.
I feel like I was just saying number after number after number, and after a while, they start to come together.
Keep track of all of that. Carl, great job, keeping, keeping good order of our finances.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, up next, we have Carl for our financial reports. Yeah, I don't think we need to, unless you'd like to.
No, there's no need for a motion.
There's no need.
I don't think so. Hello, Carl?
Evening, Mayor, councilors, and managers. Presenting the July financials, and the narrative is on page 22. I'll be presenting from page 23 and on. So July 31st, 2025, assets on hand were $9,673,033.78. Cash on hand is $3,681,463.59. And then we look at the 2025 tax receivables. We collected $64,300 in the month of July. Year-to-date, we have a total of $372,989.22 in advance or prepaid for the 2025 tax commitment. On the next page, at the bottom, we have the liabilities for the month, ending at On the next page, at the bottom, we have the liabilities for the month, ending at $6,438,159.89. Moving over to page 28. About a third of the way down the page is our fund balance, ending July 31st, which is $3,235,178.89. Moving over to expenses for the month on page 30. On the current column, we have expenditures of $1,048,822.43. We're at 45% of our budget, 45.5. We're down to budget by 12.9%. And a big part of that is because we haven't gone to commitment yet, and the capital improvements line is at 1.4 million. We don't expense those until the commitment has been processed. Moving on to page 35, our revenues for the month. Under the current column, we came in at $817,679. And we've collected to budget 36.8%. So we're under budget by 21.5%. And again, if we had gone to commitment, the general government line would be more in line with the total revenues that we had. So once we go to commitment, those, those numbers should jump up to where we should be. Exize for the month of July, we came in at $156,024.16. Year-to-date, we're at $1,022,850.38. We're over budget and excise taxed by 1.7% compared to our budget. And the revenue sharing for July was at $263,929.40. Year-to-date, we're at $1,544,921.40. And we are over budget 7.6%, or about $178,000. Moving over to page 40, we have our graph for the month. And again, we are way under budget due to the fact that we haven't posted our capital line items yet. Waiting for our, our commitment to be passed hopefully in September. Cash balance, happy inside, cash balance is at, still at a healthy balance, and we're watching that month to month. Considering our cash flow, we don't want it to get too low. But we do have TANs set up in place in case the commitment doesn't pass in September. That's my report. Unless anyone had any questions?
What are the wishes of the council?
Needs to accept financial report.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Carl.
Thanks, Carl.
Item number 10C is a report from the Public Safety Building Committee. So there is information in your packets in regards to the Blaine-Kasey contractors' information that they provided us. So the Caribou City Council Public Safety Committee has been working with Artifacts and Mans Woodward on a design for the new police station building. The RFP went out and the bids were opened publicly on June 18th, 2025. All of the bids were over the desired budget. Three of them were very close, and those were from Ganniston, Blaine-Kasey, and Bowman. But Blaine-Kasey Contractors of Augusta, Maine were the low bidders once all the deductive alternates were factored in. Artifacts suggested that we reach out to the low bidders for suggestions on value engineering for the project to get the project into an affordable price range. And they've been very helpful with that. So with the value engineering process, the bid has been reduced from $13,095,580 to $9,692,623. Pretty impressive, yes. So, and that information is all in the packet. And for anyone who wants to be able to see that, you can see this packet online along with any other council packets we've had that do contain information about the project. That's all on the website in the agendas from our meetings. So the next step, we have asked Artifacts and Mans Woodward to get some more information to us to make sure that some of these value engineering suggestions are going to be compatible with one another. So as a result of that, we've also asked Blaine-Kasey for a 30-day bid extension so that we can really work with Artifacts and Mans Woodward to look at some of those value engineering compatibilities. So the plan would be to bring a full recommendation to the council at the September 15th meeting. Yes. Any questions?
I have a question. So does this, this low price, and I'm sure that'll, that'll change possibly a little bit, but does that take into account the 2.5 million?
No.
No, no.
So that would come off directly?
It would bring you down to seven something.
Correct. Okay. I just wanted to have that out there in the, yeah, in the forum.
For sure. Thank you.
Clarification I was going to ask.
Thank you.
So does that, does that number include the soft costs of 1.87 million?
No.
So we have to add that on top. So that brings us to 11.5, still under the 12.5.
Considerably, actually.
Yeah, if we want to spend 12.5 million. One of the things that I noticed in their submission is it's heavily caveated with, "We can't really commit to this until the compatibility issues are addressed, so we're doing that." But they also say that we need updated drawings and design, design work and updated drawings. And I'm wondering, who's going to do that? What's the plan for getting that done?
Well, we are waiting to hear back from Artifacts. We have asked them several questions based on what we have here. I'm sure there's going to be an additional charge for them to do the new drawings.
So that's what, that's what the committee has in mind, to have Artif, Artifacts.
I don't know that they have in mind. We've asked them questions.
We would like to get the answers back first.
That's good.
These are the removed items?
Yes.
Okay. I have.
We did not get anything new from the time the packet was produced until this meeting.
A lot of the items that are in the package though are talking about changing materials from one to another, and that's where they picked up the majority of the cost savings, which shouldn't help us with the design package not being that expensive if we have to do it.
Well, the huge one was masonry and metals. That was huge. But I'm wondering whether we're, we're considering like, some of these, some of these replacements, like on insulation, HVAC, the masonry, you know, have, have we considered what the ongoing operational costs, increase in operational costs are going to be with less insulation on our walls and ceiling and roof?
They're not talking about less insulation. They're talking about a different type.
It's a, it's, it's a different pot of money, but we, I think we had, just have to be sensitive to that and understand what we're agreeing to.
And I think that's part of what we're doing by asking Mans Woodward and Artifacts to start looking at these compatibilities to see if it's going to work. So that's information that they should be giving to us.
Yeah. And that, that was most of my questions, like, all the caveats requiring additional design and final pricing. So we're going to get different numbers. Yeah, and that was about it. So, I mean, if, if council wants to proceed down this road, you know, my concern is, and I respect the wishes of the, the majority of council. I've made my views clear that this is too big and expensive. But if you want to go down this road, just know that you're taking on a lot of risk, even at 11.5. You're not accounting for the inevitable delays and cost overruns that are going to accrue. And, you know, then what are we going to do? We'd want to make sure that we have some margin there. And bumping, bumping all the way up to 12 and a half, even though that's allowable, may not be the smart thing to do. So just keep that in mind as we go forward.
Any other comments, questions?
No.
Jan, I know you're here and you're a member of the committee. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Pardon me, can we step up?
Yep, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just want to say that doing conformed drawings after a value engineering process is normal. That is understandable. That way you can see, it's very easy to cross stuff off and change some numbers and stuff. It's much easier to see a drawing to make sure everything fits properly. Again, we have asked Artifacts and Mans Woodward and all of their sub-consultants to weigh in on, on these items, because we, we really want to know, is this going to work for us? We, I have been trying to keep track of the money for everybody, how much things are going to cost if we do this, if we do that. Don't forget, we got to add this in. So I believe everyone's aware of the extra costs that, that are going to happen. Even if we reduce stuff, you're still going to pay for additional, additional design.
And some of the things I noticed, they took off their scope of work, but it still needs to be paid for, like the, like the landscaping, for instance. And there are a couple other items sprinkled in there that, okay, well, sales tax, where's that come from? Who's going to pay the sales tax? How, how can they just deduct sales tax?
Your municipality, there's no sales tax.
Tax exempt.
You're tax exempt.
On materials?
On everything.
I didn't know that.
Everything.
Learn something new every day.
That was something that should have been taken off the top, and I don't believe Artifacts realized that. I don't know what the scoop was, but anyway, that's, so that's, that's the easy part.
No.
The other, what else did you just mention?
Like the landscaping.
I'm thinking they're talking about trees and things like that. That's, that's easy stuff that we could do later. I certainly don't think they knew grass and, and lumen seed.
We'll have to find out.
But that's, that's my take on it, is all that.
And these numbers, finally, and these numbers take all the deducts that were, that were proposed, is that right?
Yes, I believe so.
That's what I thought I read, so.
He did try to clarify a couple at the end, that if he did these other things, then the deducts of like number whatever and whatever weren't applicable anymore.
Right.
He said something like that.
Because they've already changed it.
So that he's already taken that out and then some.
So those deducts are debris disposal, which we'd have to pay for.
No, they're talking about disposing of it on-site as opposed to taking it somewhere else.
Burying it?
Yeah.
Well, you, you can't bury things in the compact zone.
Right. So what is, oh, okay. So debris disposal, paving east access drive.
That's the driveway that goes down to the mechanical field.
Security fence and gate on the south side. No ground face block at the interior. Revised security ceilings and evidence storage. And seal concrete in Sallyport and masonry veneer at north and east elevation. So we're giving all that stuff up right off the top.
The north and east elevations, we really didn't, we tried to get rid of that previously. And we left it in just in case, but we're going to lose it anyway.
It's smart to put it in as an option.
Well, that's just it. You never know.
Hey.
You never know.
I guess what, what jumped out at me is the, the security ceilings and what the impact that it, what impact that would be to our ability to store the evidence. I'm assuming it's still going to meet code and certification standards and all of that.
That is part of what we're asking. I mean, the fact that you're included as a, as a deduct implies to me that it is a viable option.
Right.
So that, that's.
Yeah. I did learn a lot looking through this and, and even learning about what value engineering. And you helped me understand that. I appreciate it, what that means. And so the functionality of the building shouldn't be impacted. It's just things like materials and finishes and things that we can get rid of without impacting the operations.
That is the intent.
So, okay. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Yes. When we do drawings, in, in an effort for transparency, when we do drawings, we do architectural straight down into the vision.
Pardon me?
We do straight down into the plan.
Pardon me? Yes, yes.
Is there a possibility of, without incurring a whole, hell of a lot of other costs, seeing it as a visual?
There are elevation drawings in the bid package.
Yes.
I mean with, with the new ones, so that, I know that, I know what's there. What I'm saying is there may be other people who are trying to figure out, well, what exactly are we talking about with the changes? I mean, we're sitting here talking about this deducts this, this looks like that.
You may not notice the changes from the outside. I mean, it's still going to be a metal building with a metal roof.
That's still kind of what you want to portray as for transparency. That, look, this is what you're paying for. What we've done is we've just done it better with less money as opposed to.
We've done it equivalently with less money.
Right, right.
So I think that may be something that just the general public would like to see insofar as being able to, you know, say, oh, look, we really aren't, you know, living out of a cardboard box. We really, you know, get rid of everything. Everything is still there. It isn't happening.
Well, the, the conformed drawing should show similarities, I guess. I think if that's what you're looking for.
Yes, I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, because most folks, you know, it takes a little bit to understand, you know, this is not something everybody gets to play with.
Absolutely.
But if you can go to the site and say, oh, look, here's what the old building looks like, here's what the new building looks like, I think it would be much more comforting to the taxpayer.
I guess. Well, with a conformed set, I think that will be evident to some degree.
I would assume.
I would assume. I mean, we are changing some exterior things, but it's still, it's a metal building with metal siding and metal roof. And it's just not going to have all the pretty, pretty stuff. It's going to have just the really nice stuff, so.
Right.
That's the intent.
Well, I think everyone wants it to be an attractive building, something we can be, be proud of. So I don't, I don't want to totally skimp on all of that and have a big metal box.
No.
You know, so I appreciate all of that. Can you, can somebody tell me, is the mezzanine still part of this plan?
I believe so.
That area that is in the middle and there's a mezzanine?
Well, he is also proposing getting rid of all the mechanicals in the basement, so that's going to have to go somewhere.
But I thought I saw getting rid of that mezzanine too.
I don't believe so.
I don't think so either.
I'd have, I'd have to look, Dan. I really, I, it's been a, it's been a.
No, I don't recall that.
Well, I wasn't understanding what I was reading, and I just wondered whether that was.
Please, if you can point to it.
I'll try. Yeah. All, see, page 43. Division four and five, masonry and metals again. All trusses to be wood, eliminate all bar joists and deck. Spacing of trusses, 16 on center. Roof sheathing from seven-eighths to three-quarters, which I kind of wonder about. But anyway, is that, is that the mezzanine?
Not necessarily.
No.
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 When they talk about bar joists and deck and the trusses, okay.
The deck could be the roof deck. It could be the floor deck. It depends on what he's talking about. I suspect it's the roof deck he's talking about. He's talking about trusses.
Remove insulation from deck. I'll wait for the answers. I mean, I, I know you guys are pursuing it, and that's great. I have a lot of questions.
And we do not have all the answers. That's, that's why we're reaching out to, to all these people.
So Jan, sorry, were you finished? I didn't mean to cut, cut you off. Dan?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes, I thought you said.
Okay, no, I was, but I didn't want to, I didn't want to stop if you were still asking questions.
No, thank you.
So it says to be determined on some of the lighting. So there's still deductions that could be coming in from that lighting? So we're not done with the deductions necessarily at this point, right?
No.
Okay. I, I had noticed that there were some to be determined, so. All right. And are we able to say there's this option? We just like the other option better. Can we pick and choose that way, or is it all or nothing?
I don't see why not.
Yeah, I would think that we could.
I would think so too, but I just wanted to clarify. Yep.
Some things are going to be nice to keep. We're going to say, we really want to keep that. That's important to us. Let's deduct these other things. So those are things we, again, we need to talk about.
That's what I was wondering. Yep, exactly.
And this all just happened, what, Wednesday last week?
Very quick.
And then Friday, and we sent out questions, and just hasn't come back around yet, so.
Thank you.
And some are not compatible with others, right?
Correct.
Some of you say, well, we can do A, but if we do A, that means you can't do C.
Potentially.
And that's what they're asking for them to come back with, to clarify those.
We could do this, or we could do, you know, we could do it three different levels. So we can get you, you know, three different options for countertop or whatever.
Right.
And so we got to pick one of them, let's say. So it depends on which one they pick.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else on the council have anything they want to say, share, ask about?
No.
No? I think this is just a huge substantial amount to see, to find in savings. And I, I was excited to see the numbers, so. It was awesome. Thank you.
You've been working pretty hard at it.
Yep.
Yes, we are.
So as the mayor said on our website.
So as the mayor said, on our website, there is under government and then city council, we have the city council committees. The bottom of that page is where you can get the agendas for different meetings. These are the agendas for the public safety building.
And as you can see, I just want to kind of point this out, too. If you look, I mean, every meeting we've had since last December is posted here with the date and the time and all of that with the agendas. But I'd also like to point this out, just for people to understand. If you click on any of those other committees, you'll see way less than half of the number of meetings that this committee has invested the time to take to do. So we've put in a lot of effort on this.
Yes, we have.
And a lot of time, of our time. So I just want people to understand that, too. Yep.
Yeah, that's apparent. And one suggestion I might have is to keep a record and keep meeting minutes like all the other committees and boards do that serve the city and the city council. And I've not seen any minutes from any of those meetings. Maybe, maybe they're out there somewhere. Are they posted somewhere?
No, I don't take minutes during the meetings.
But the reports that.
I mean, the council, I mean, I hear tisking in the audience. I mean, the council, the committee will report back to the council. I just don't take.
Right, because it comes back.
I mean, if I have an action, I do.
Right.
But you had a nice write-up in.
Right, like, if there's something to report on, sometimes we're just receiving information. And as you said, on, on the website, there is something that says Public Station, the Police Station Project.
Yep.
Now, I will admit that I have not been good at keeping up with loading things, but yesterday I spent over eight hours getting things ready and sending them to the person who does our website. She was not able to get them on for today, but I'm sure in the next day or so, she will have the three hundred and twelve things that I got ready for her going back to two thousand and twelve. So. And, you know, sometimes just a reminder, hey, maybe we need to update that is a nice way to say, maybe just update it. I can't remember everything.
Oh, and I think we're understaffed, and so it is difficult sometimes to keep all of those balls in the air, so.
Yep, I do the best I can. More tisking. But still, you know, it would be up to the council if they decided I wasn't doing an adequate job at that.
No, Penny, I think you're doing a great job.
Anyway, more tisking, anyway.
Yeah, if, the members of the audience, it's really important to keep those types of comments or sounds to yourselves. That's not appropriate. So I'd appreciate that respect given to our city manager when she's speaking. Thank you. Okay, anything further on this? Okay, item number ten D is Tax Acquired Property Policy and Land Bank Committee on page forty-seven.
Did you read this?
Sure.
The newly formed Caribou City Council Ad Hoc Committee to update the city's policy for tax-acquired property and revisit the idea of forming a land bank to aid with the disposal of tax-acquired property. We met on Friday, August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The initial meeting was to review the current policy for tax-acquired property and review statutes enacted by the state of Maine in response to the two thousand and twenty-three Tyler versus Hennepin County Supreme Court decision. This was a productive meeting between the members of the city council staff. All of those attending the meeting was off the chair, and Councilor Bagley, Councilor Lovell, and Carl was there as well, and Eric. Agreed to submit suggested changes. Eric will incorporate these into a document for review before the next meeting date be determined. Good brief on that. It was a couple-hour meeting. I learned a lot on the Tyler versus Hennepin, which really, the state's really just crippling us on how we can dispose of this tax-acquired property. We've been waiving foreclosures on this. It doesn't look like in the near future that the state is going to change any of these, you know, this, what they've implemented for us. And there was some more details on it. I don't need to get into that, I guess, for the time. So we've, as we talked about, some of our options and to get a formalized policy, because like I said, it doesn't look like the legislature's going to back off, and we kind of waited on that. We typically do the lien process November seventh, something like that. We realized that probably we won't have this in place. Possibly, we could have something in place for the council, but I think we were more agreeable to have something to bring back to the council before the end of the year. This is kind of how we left it that way. And there will be, Councilor Bagley is working on some of this to get to Eric. And it will be available to the council prior to the meeting for anyone's suggestions before we just kind of dump it in your lap. This is one of my, was my big concerns when I ran last year. And I know our tax-acquired policies have changed a lot over the years, how we dispose of it. And we've always been able to do that in-house, but with this, with these new restrictions, or, well, not restrictions, mandates, I guess, if you like the term. So that's where we're on that. If anybody has any questions as far as that goes, I think we'll just, we'll have an update on that. It was a very nice breaker. I think it was very productive.
I think so.
There's a lot of, a lot of information.
There's a lot to do.
And also, we reviewed the, Councilor gone at the time, we had the blight tool removal kit. So we talked about that a lot. I had Eric brought that up, because these kind of go hand in hand. By the time we get some of these properties, it's, it's a blight removal. I think it's going to get dumped in our lap. So lots of options here, or several options to move ahead with. So that's what I had to say about that. And I don't know when we're going to meet again. We'll figure that out.
Great. Anybody have any questions? Thank you so much. Item ten E is our city manager's report.
So building off of what Deputy Mayor Smith said, I've got a couple pictures here that were in the report about blighted buildings. And this was something that we talked about at the tax-acquired property land bank meeting. We also discussed a land bank, too. That was something that when I went to the Brownfields Conference, there's been a lot of talk about that, too. So in November, the Caribou City Council will be considering waiving foreclosure on properties that have been tax-acquired. Many of the structures are considered blighted buildings, like we discussed at our meeting, like Seven Water Street. The owner has indicated previously that they would convey the property to the city. Another property that the owner would like to convey to the city and has previously had foreclosure waived is sixty-three Sweden Street. So these are the two buildings that you see here. Both of them were on the list for waiver of foreclosure last year due to having, you know, they would have been eligible for the automatic lien foreclosure process. And as the deputy mayor said, some of the issues come with disposing of the property. So the committee hopes to be able to have some information about, you know, next steps with what are we going to do this year with waiving foreclosure or letting them foreclose with the idea that by the end of the year, then we'll have a better policy in place for disposing of that. Also in the memo, the Amazon Last Mile Delivery Station is now delivering packages. They are working to schedule a ribbon cutting for late September. Welcome to our Public Works Director, Chris Perkins. He has been with the city of Caribou for a month and is doing a great job. Some other things that have come up since this memo. We have received word that at Loring, there is going to be a company coming that's going to be refurbishing seven forty-seven planes in the arch hangar. So we feel that a lot of the new workers that will be coming there will decide they're going to live in Caribou, and we're looking forward to that. Also, something I had brought up before, but I guess it's something that the council should think about discussing or maybe forming another ad hoc committee to talk about is spectrum and charter. And we do have an agreement with them, which has long expired, for offering cable services in the community. And they want a new contract before they will work on the issues we're having with our access channel. And, you know, that has been an issue with our citizens being able to access the meetings that are held here in the city council chambers, because we've had, we have issues with some of the, the equipment is for digital and analog and trying to reconcile them. Something else, so Deputy Mayor Smith and I were at the meeting on Friday for Rusticlay Solutions, which is the landfill. Over the weekend, there was another large fire at the landfill. So I really would just like to tell people, if you have lithium ion batteries, please do not throw them in your trash. Please dispose of them properly. You can take them to the landfill. We don't have a disposal site here. The Fort Fairfield Town Office does. Prescott's working on one, too. But this is what's causing the fires in the landfill, is improperly disposed of lithium ion, lithium ion batteries. So this is something I feel like we talk about every month at the meetings for AWS. And it's, it's just becoming a huge problem. And it's just more fires all the time. And I don't know, Deputy Mayor, if you have anything to say about that from our meeting on Friday.
Yeah, I was going to bring it up later, but just mentioned that we had the meeting. As always, a very, very well-run facility, very solvent, but it's becoming more and more prevalent, the battery, battery issues and the fires. And really, it's very hard, and I think the director had mentioned it, well, you know, we can't wait till we find the perfect solution. We've got to just, we've got to get as many as we.
Can out.
Can out of the landfill now, and then hopefully down the road, get it completely. Instead of waiting three years till we get the perfect solution, if we can just minimize the risk of the fire. And we mentioned there was, there was a fire that was done by batteries charging, which scared me. They, you know how you take your Makita batteries or whatever and leave them on the charger plugged in? Well, that started a fire at someone's house. Because you just plug them in, and then you leave them plugged in all the time, so.
Scary.
Maybe I ought to go unplug mine when the green light comes on.
Yeah, that is scary. Oh, wow.
Just, just a, just a little battery story there, so. That was a big topic of discussion. And I just saw the, you know, that came through for the other fire after we had the meeting.
Yeah. Was that what happened? Because I mean, if it gets down far enough, it can damage the liner at the landfill. That's something that's got to be investigated now. It damaged some of the equipment, the backhoes that were working on the fire.
Yeah, they lost a bulldozer and a few other things while they were there, yes.
So it's, it's a concern. And like you said, the state's trying to work on a solution, but we can't wait for that. We really have to be trying to figure out how to keep these batteries out of our landfill.
As many as we can and minimize.
Yeah, as many as we can.
Minimize it.
Yeah. After the meeting, I was trying to read about the science of the whole thing, and it's very, it's a lot to it. You know, why they're such a danger. I can't explain it to you, but you can Google it. That's what I did. So does anyone have any questions about this report or any other matters for me?
No.
No.
Thank you, Penny.
You're welcome.
Okay, item eleven is unfinished business, and we have a couple of things on the agenda this evening. First is to finalize acceptance of the RFP for demolition of forty-nine Herschel Street, and that is on page forty-nine of your packet. That's good planning, Penny.
Yes, thanks. Yes, forty-nine Herschel, forty-nine on the page. So at the last meeting, the city council tabled the acceptance of a bid for the RFP for the demolition of forty-nine Herschel Street, and asked staff to connect with the low bidder and asked that he amend his bid to include language about what was included and excluded from his bid. An updated proposal is attached. You'll see that on page fifty. I have also attached the information presented at the last meeting for reference, and that starts on fifty-one. And Mr. Thibodeau's here if you have a question. And Mr. Thibodeau, did you sign in? Sorry, I know I've said that fourteen times, but I want to make sure everyone has signed in.
I think the reason we got postponed, I'm a little against it, but was just to be sure, because there was some concern, because the bid was considerably lower than the other two. But I think, I believe he's done a lot of work for us in the past, so.
Yeah, for sure.
And done, done an excellent job. I mean, there's no.
Yep.
Cut any corners. It's always been done, and it's done in a timely fashion. Only question I have, what would be the timeframe to, I'm always big on this when we work this? I mean, is it?
So first, we have County Environmental doing, looking for asbestos-containing materials. If any are found, then those will have to be properly abated. And Mr. Thibodeau has indicated he'll start on the inside to take anything from the inside that needs to be removed. That should take about a week. But typically, and we have it in our bid, once you start, you have to finish, because we don't want to have something there that's going to be an eyesore.
Or not get done before.
And it's very close to another one of the buildings, and that's a discussion that has been had, too, to just make sure that we're really careful because of the close proximity there.
Any liability would damage the chamber, very close building.
And, you know, we have the addresses and the names of the bedding landowners. And so we have sent letters to them in the past, like just updating them on the, how we're going with everything so that they're in the loop.
Has County Environmental started? Yes, they have. Okay, that's good.
Yeah, they started last week.
Excellent.
Make a motion. We award the project for the demolition of forty-nine Herschel Street to Thibodeau and Thibodeau Trucking.
I second it.
Excavation at the cost of thirty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
So excited, I second it. Jump right in there. Motion and a second, further discussion? I would just like to thank you for updating this, just to clarify it. It's really great. It's been very helpful.
I apologize for not bringing it in, but it's just a senior board.
Yeah, no, no, appreciated. All right, Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, item number eleven B is reconciliation and integration of ordinance three into the city code. So kind of a discussion on that, and that's on page fifty-seven of your packet. Okay. And Penny, I'm going to let you kind of explain this, what that means, what we need to be looking at.
Right. So the Caribou City Council voted in the affirmative five to two to approve ordinance three, twenty-twenty-five series, to repeal and replace section thirty-nine of chapter thirteen, the land use ordinances of the city of Caribou. Section thirteen dash one hundred, number seven, the land use ordinances of the city of Caribou, tasks the planning board with amending these ordinances. Since this was not done prior to the vote on ordinance three, there are sections of chapter thirteen that need to be updated. One example is the Caribou land use table, which does not allow medical marijuana dispensaries in the R three, but allows with planning board approval, a location in the RC two, C one, C two, I one, I two, and H one zones. The city council should formally request that the planning board work on updating the land use table and any other affected sections of chapter thirteen. Additionally, in chapter seven, licenses and permits, article eleven, deals with the licensing of registered nonprofit dispensaries and registered cultivation facilities. This ordinance would also need to be updated. Chapter seven requires a permit by DHHS and the planning board. Ordinance three addresses zoning only to the extent that the use would be allowed in the R three zone and any non-conforming on the date of enactment, but does not address planning board approval. Chapter seven also calls for a public hearing on applications. Also, for example, the fee is listed at five hundred dollars per location. Ordinance three calls for a one thousand dollar annual licensing fees and additional fees for inspections. The city council should formally request that the planning board and city staff work on updating chapter seven, article eleven. And these are, you can look at these online. This is all online. Our chapter seven, this chapter seven, it's all online. Did you have a question?
No, I'm good.
So city charter and ordinances is right here on our website. And if you page down, it has information on chapter seven, which is licenses and permits, and thirteen is the zoning ordinance, if someone is looking for where I'm coming from on that. from on that.
This won't change the
Yeah, go ahead.
This won't, this won't change the ordinance we voted on, they're just asking them to, you know, how to incorporate it into chapter 13 and chapter 7?
Correct.
Okay, this one, clarify.
It won't change anything that we ordered on.
On the ordinance itself, it's just asking them to see how
Right, we're asking them to update the areas that need to be updated.
And it will allow them to do, work in an R3, correct? Yep. Sound good?
Okay, so you're asking, you're gonna go back or go to the planning board because you didn't go to the planning board?
Correct.
But you say that the ordinance that you passed still stands, but what if this doesn't work out? I mean, what if they say no or whatever on these ordinances that they're, because if it should've gone to the planning board first, they would have first decided whether it moved on, I would assume, or recommended to the, to the council whether or not to go through with the original
They also
As I understand it, and I could be, maybe I don't understand it correctly, but the planning board can make recommendations to the council and say, this is what we think that the council should do, but ultimately, the council can say, the council is choosing to do this.
Right, but isn't there a step missing here where, because it didn't go to the planning board? It should go to the planning board and back to wait.
I think that these items can go to the planning board.
Yes, they can.
But not the original one that you
No.
Not the ordinance, no.
Well, I think the whole, the whole foundation is at risk because we didn't follow the procedure.
But if it didn't
And the procedure was established and well-known to us, and as the introduction says, I mean, we, we voted on and passed this ordinance without the required planning board review. So in order to really clean this up, I think we need to rescind our previous vote, send it to the planning board where it should've started, and had we done that in the beginning, all of these things that we're now trying to clean up would've been caught by the planning board and actually done all at once. But my concern is, we're now vulnerable from a legal standpoint, a legal challenge standpoint, that our initial approval of that ordinance 3 is invalid, and that's just gonna mess us all up.
And I believe we did send it to the planning board.
We did send it. It had a month to look at it, review it, give us anything that it wanted to, and at the end of the day, the council has to vote on it. We vote on it.
Well, I agree that the planning board can come with recommendations that the council doesn't agree with, and the council has the authority to amend those as they see fit.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the process that should've happened as opposed to ramming this through without planning board review at all.
Planning board did review it.
Without the formal planning board review outlined in our ordinance, which requires a public hearing and basically a 30-day timeline, so
Which happened?
Which did not happen. So I move at this time that we rescind our previous vote approving ordinance 3, series 2025, approving that ordinance, and refer the matter back to the planning board for action.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion?
If that was the case, then why was the paragraph prior to sending it to the planning board allowing the city council to enact an ordinance on its own?
I don't know what, I don't know what section of the ordinance you're referring to.
It was right there. You, on that evening, I mean, we can go back to the Google, but on that evening when we discussed that, because I remember reading that, those two paragraphs, that I agreed, the planning board has the right and does this and makes recommendations to the council, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. However, in the very format of that, in the paragraph before, it says that the city council in its entirety by vote can make an ordinance.
Yes, we can.
There is another section of the ordinance that states that, and our attorney looked at both sections, and you recall, he said in his analysis, taking the two together, and the other comments that I'm referring to are specifically in chapter 13 for the land use, and it gives specific authority to the planning board for land use issues, all right? So his opinion was, taken together, it's required to go to the planning board. And that's, I mean, that's my interpretation as well. It's not really an interpretation, but that's our lawyer's recommendation that we chose not to take.
For a second?
I'd also add that there, there have been concerns raised about proper notice, and I'm not sure about the ins and outs of that. I thought proper notice was given, except for the last-minute change that came in the day of.
And ordinance can be changed at the last minute?
It can be argued that proper notice wasn't given to the public for that. Basically, it was in effect a new introduction of an ordinance because it was significantly different from what was introduced initially.
No, it wasn't.
So, it was.
No, it wasn't.
So there are, there are issues with notifications and public notifications, and because the planning board never got to meet, there was no public notification, and that deprived the citizens of their due process of reviewing and knowing what's going on.
But they did meet on it. They had a meeting on it.
And there was a public hearing here, and I
There was a public hearing, and then there was
The public was able to speak.
There was two meetings before where if there was any issues, people could've come, stated, and they never did.
I'm looking specifically at the ordinance, and state law also supports that, and our charter also supports it. So you have three elements of things that, it can be argued, I think strongly, that we violated in passing this without sending it to the planning board. I'm just saying
Do you have the ordinance, that section to read to me right now by chance? You have the ordinance right there that you can read? I just want to hear it specifically, and
I don't know if I have the words. I have the references.
So it wasn't, there was not a vote to send it to the planning board. The planning board, on their own volition, scheduled a workshop between the two meetings that were in June, thinking it was gonna come to them to, to tear apart, okay, we're going to need to change this, we're going to need to change this, thinking they were going to get something back, but instead, an ordinance was introduced at the June 30th meeting, an ordinance that the, wasn't from the planning board. At that point, I mean, did they discuss it at their meeting? Sure, but at that point, it's an introduced ordinance, you know, and so, yeah, they had a workshop thinking it was going to come to them, so they wanted to have some work done before it was sent to them, so they were ready for it.
Sure.
But it wasn't anything that they, you know, by the time, and if something is introduced, it was, you know, they didn't, but if you send it to them now, we can get, they can get working on what's needed to incorporate it into what
To work on what needs to be updated, to supplement, but they don't need to rewrite something that's already written.
Well, and that's what you'd be doing, you'd be sending what you have over to them for action, and then they, they would do everything that's needed to make it align with everything else. And if you don't like what they give you back, you amend it. Here are the, here are the references. MRS Title 30A, paragraph 4352, zoning ordinances, sections 9 and 10, this is state law. Sections 9 and 10, and it requires notice of the planning board, public hearing. Since we didn't send it to the planning board, we violated that. City of Caribou Charter, section 212C, procedure, requires seven days for public inspection of the draft, the, the draft ordinance that was introduced. The initial one, we had the seven days, as I recall, but the last-minute change, the day of the meeting, there was not opportunity for a public inspection of that draft.
So can I get a clarification? If you make a change to an ordinance, say we have one that's been presented, the community has reviewed it, but we make a change here, we have to start that seven-day period again for review?
If you're changing
Because we've done that 100 times over the years to many ordinances.
Yes, no, that's inaccurate.
Minor changes in grammar and this and that, that don't substantially
We've changed complete sentences of different ordinances.
Substantially impact.
Yeah, but the argument could be made that the change that was brought forth on that day was nothing more than a clarification, because until that point, everybody was tripping over the words and the terms. This whole process, and, and I respect everybody's opinion and where they're coming from and their interpretations, this whole process has been continually screwed up by the fact that we did not have a working, and I'm gonna say it in the simplest form, we did not have a working vocabulary where we all understood the words that were being put into the conversation. Someone said, well, this is this. Well, that's an opt-in if you say it that way. No, it's not. There's been a change of the law. That's not an opt-in. You know, this went back and forth. If anything, if you want to criticize any part of this, is the fact that we should've sat down and agreed to the terminology that we were using in the discussion so that we wouldn't have spent the last minute making the amendments to clarify what was done. Now, and, and I'm gonna take 10 seconds to do a little rant here, okay? One of the things that, in reviewing this, because there is a lot of conversations, both in the community, amongst ourselves, at the state level, is the fact that when we voted, I can't, I'll say we because I'm sitting here now, but it was done before my arrival, when we decided to opt out of the commercial sales part of this and only work with the medical side of the house, in reality, based on the terminology that's now being tossed around, we actually opted in to the program. If we were going to opt out, then we would not have allowed any dispensaries to start with, but because we allowed a dispensary to come in, we automatically opt in now as the law changes. That's the slippery slope that we're now trapped in because we allowed a business to come in here, and that's before you, sir, okay? Because we allowed that, we actually opted into the main marijuana, marijuana program, and we don't have the opportunity to back out. What we do have the opportunity, and we do have the ability for, which is why I support this, is we can control what part of the opt-in we have to survive with.
You're correct.
Now, in Mr. Bacon's case, I wish he was still here because I had a couple of questions, and I'll, well, probably forward them to Penny so that she can discuss with him. I'd like to know what his, what he means by retail grow. Is he retail grow and ship out and someone else sends in a different location? How are we going to deal with that? Because that's coming. He's right in his
It's coming, yep.
That's a farm produce, that, the biggest change, and I think you'll agree with me since you're sitting here, is that when this was under DHHS, it was its own freaking nightmare. They didn't care where you got the product from, as long as you were ready to go when you were able to get your first medical client. And according to the law, you would've had to have done it illegally to be ready to go on day one, because you were supposed to have X amount of plants in process of growing, X amount of ready for, you know, to give to your patient and so forth. When they walked in the door, there was no justification on how you were supposed to prepare yourself under that law. In the same instance, to give you an example of how screwed up this is, when it shifted over to the Department of Agriculture, which you are now under, correct? Then certainly, the growing aspects is done by the Department of Agriculture. They monitor what type of soils, what type of fertilizers, you know, chemical content?
It's just the OCP.
Okay, OCP.
Yep.
Okay, so the commercial growers for, are now under USDA and how they're growing, and DHHS has been completely dropped out of it. You've seen how the laws have changed in the way that you process it, you're ready to go. So we're in the middle of this, and the best way to describe is we're in a rowboat with an outboard motor, and we've got no oars and no gas for the motor.
Well, we're trying to accommodate one of our businesses. Who wants to continue operating?
Well, actually, we need to accommodate two.
In the best way, excuse me, in the best that we, way that we know how.
So can, I'm sorry, but he was still, can you let him finish?
Absolutely. I thought he was.
If you could just hang on for a second? No, he's not done.
So, I, I agree. I agree with you, Dan, but we're not trying to take care of just one business. That, that, that bird has left the nest. We have safe alternatives, we have Mr. Richardson, and we have other people knocking on our door. So now, we need to figure out a plan that's going to allow for this for years to come. It's the only option we have. So now, I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you, Paul.
And what I was gonna say is, this, this is done with all good intentions, and I want to say that, and I think that there's wide support for accommodating the needs of a business here in town. I've never argued the merits of the proposal. I don't know if you noticed that, but I never said one way or the other, whether I'm for or against it. I've argued against the fact that we didn't follow our process and put ourselves at legal risk completely unnecessarily, and that's what I'm trying to fix tonight. I think we ought to, I think we ought to admit our mistakes, rescind, rescind the vote, go back to the planning board where it should've started in the first place, and, and run through the process, and it won't take 10 years, it won't take one year, it'll take 30, 60 days, they'll do their thing, and we'll be on solid legal grounds. That's what I'm proposing. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. From the other side of the coin, it's just as easy to let the ordinance stand and to do the two provisions that needs to be fixed here.
That's exactly right, Paul.
You know, I mean, it, it, it's the same outcome, it's just a matter of how we're going to get there.
Except it can be challenged.
Well
And it'd be a pretty much a slam dunk.
Yeah.
Again, so what's the point of taking that risk? Let's just do it right.
Can I ask Penny to weigh in on that? Are you able to weigh in on that?
Our attorney has provided a confidential document that has outlined issues that he has with the way that it was adopted, and he feels that we are open to a challenge. Does that answer your question?
It does. Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
No.
Lovell?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
No.
No. Thank God.
I'll make a motion that requests that the Caribou Planning Board and city staff work to reconcile and integrate ordinance 3 into chapter 13 and chapter 7 of the Caribou City Code, return to the Caribou City Council.
I second it. We have a motion and a second, discussion?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, item number 12 is new business ordinances and resolutions. 12A is a discussion to countersign the election warrant for the RSU 39 budget validation for 9925, and that's on page 58.
Motion that we countersign the warrant.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
Only the notation that I hope the Caribou people stand firm in their desire to bring down the spending.
Agree. Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And next is the election motions for the 9925 budget validation election on page 61 of your packet.
Move just at the start time, the election had eight ahead. We just had the start time. The election had eight ahead. We appoint Danielle Brissette as election warden, Christina Drinkle and Amber Mendoza as deputy wardens for the September 9th, 2025 election.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tario?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 12C is to consider updating fees charged to the County of Roustick for election fees. That's on page 62. So everyone had a chance to take a look at that?
Yep.
Yeah.
So our city clerk received an email from John Gibson, the Community Services Director for the Unorganized Territories in Roustick County. After reviewing the last agreement, it was found that the rates were set in July of 2013. And since that date, wages and materials have more than doubled. So our city clerk is proposing changing the amounts to reflect the current minimum wage and increasing the other numbers by 5% to bring them closer to what the election is costing the municipality. So if you are comfortable making a motion, there is a motion. If you feel this needs to be a first read, this is the first time that we have talked about it.
I'll make a motion to adopt the fee schedule for providing election services to Conner Township.
Second.
Motion and a second.
So may I ask a question on the, on the draft? You mentioned in your introduction that costs have more than doubled. And yet, the proposed increases is not anywhere near double. So I'm just wondering what the rationale is for not bumping it up to 2,600 in 2070?
Danielle's not here to answer the question. So that I don't know. I mean, they use a lot of the same things we're using in Caribou. There's not a lot of signs and things that are different. But I don't know. Full disclosure, I don't know. This came from Danielle, and we literally just talked about it over the last week, because it came up as the county is working on their budget. So they have, they're working on their budget, so they're asking for some new numbers. So I'm sure she had her reasons.
Okay. Thanks.
Further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tario?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I would just say on that, you know, should it turn out that it's not enough, we can always, we can update it again next year.
Yep, we can.
So I would be interested in knowing the rationale for not, if costs are more than double, why aren't we doubling our fees?
This will be, this will be, we did this now, so it will be effective for the RSU election.
We cannot charge for RSU elections. So you're paying for, this is only about Conner. So Conner's kids don't go to RSU 39.
We take that in the aforementioned non-touchable part.
Yes, I knew that.
That's the best way I can explain that.
It will be effective for November.
Yeah, the city has to bear the cost of the full cost of the election.
I thought I heard that. We took, we got the first one, and then any subsequent ones are paid for by someone else.
Well, that might be another question for Danielle.
Okay.
Yeah. I can ask those two questions and let you know.
It doesn't seem fair that we'd be saddled with the bill for a process that hasn't worked very well for the school district.
But at the same time, it's all the same, it comes out of the same pockets anyway.
I guess.
And I will say that Danielle does a great job with her elections. She has-
I totally, yeah.
She, and she doesn't get more people than she needs. She has, she's an excellent steward of her resources in that department.
Yes, she is.
Okay. Item number 13 is reports and discussion by mayor and council members. I will start with Councilor Watson this evening.
I have not attended any meetings or things that are particularly special. I do want to say a thank you to everybody who is involved, yet again, in getting things done for Caribou Cares About Kids. That was truly outstanding. I still hold my grudge with you, Jody. We'll take it later.
Oh, no.
You said that under your breath. Say it again, so it has a full impact.
I continue my graduate, Jody. I thought it was a good float, and it could have at least received one vote. That would have been a precedent. On a different note, it's not been discussed too much here. And I appreciate the small amount of time I must steal to do this. The Veterans of Foreign Wars has two large programs that they do. One is called Back to School Bingo, and the other one is the Christmas Bingo. In which case, because we're members of the community, we step forward to try to, you know, provide for those folks that live amongst us. Roughly about a year ago, we lost bingo. It was told that, and interpreted by the state, that anybody who did bingo was a game of chance, and we were encouraged in gambling among minors.
Bingo?
Yes. It included school bingos, nursing homes, bars, even everything that is a game of chance was considered to encourage gambling if it involved anybody under the age of 16. Through the dedication of some really good people, we were able to reverse the state's position on that. To now, we can have bingo back in schools to learn math, math skills. We can do it in nursing homes to, I'm sorry, I know I need to talk a little bit louder. I apologize. But you can now have bingo in schools to teach math skills. You can have it back in the nursing homes as an event for people to participate with. And it allows us to go back to caring for the kids in our community. And just as a plug for them, it was where I'm going, but I wanted you to have that, because it was a small group of about six people that really worked their rear ends off to make it happen. And I give credit where credit is due. Those guys were really phenomenal in it. We were able to care for, at the Back to School Bingo, we did 100 and, I think, 165 kids. And we covered not only Caribou, Paramway, Stockholm, Van Buren, Partes Prescott, and Van Buren. And last year, we didn't have the Christmas bingo, but the year before, we did almost 200 children at Christmas.
Oh, that's nice.
So we look forward to that and thank the community for allowing us to be part of it. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Let me know if there's anything I can do to help.
Yeah.
If I really, hearing about those programs is just, anything I can do to help, just let me know.
It's kind of awesome. You got to stand out of the way.
Yeah, and it's lovely to be part of the Christmas one this year.
You got to stand out of the way of the children, because they will run you down.
Yeah, you described it. I don't think, last meeting or maybe the meeting before, you described the Christmas program, and that really warmed my heart. I would love to be part of that.
Yeah, we literally take, I guess you'd have to imagine that if you took off, yeah, two of these walls and flattened them out, we take in, we buy toys in the community, probably about like eight grand worth.
That's nice.
And-
That's really nice.
Every kid's a winner. No one goes home without. We do other things to make sure that children get what they want. I mean, we can't do the big stuff, but you know, we did best we can, and that stuff. So yeah, they really enjoy it. I think the only thing that comes out of their pocket, and if they can't do it, we do it for them, is the $3 for the hot dogs and french fries.
Oh, wow. That's nice. That's really nice.
No, it's pretty good.
That's really nice.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilor Kelly, anything you'd like to share this evening?
Yes, I would. I would like to address Mr. Tucker's comment on the conflict of interest of the police station. This is a project. It's a building that's being built. I personally do not gain anything from it financially. Neither does any police officer that is downstairs of this building gain anything financially from it. It is a building. I pay taxes, just like you pay taxes. My taxes pay for this building, just like yours does. I don't know what your definition of conflict of interest is, but next time, be wise on how you use it. Because there isn't a conflict of interest. I don't gain anything financially from this project. That's all I have to say.
Nothing.
I think I've covered AWS, the Ad Hoc Committee. The only hand I was going to mention is about the-
Thank you.
Ad Hoc Committee was, was how this interclines with blight, and it was mentioned, brought up at the meeting, you know, that we don't have a code enforcement officer. By the time we get some of these properties, they're blight. So I know there's concern in the community about having a code enforcement officer. Just wanted to, that was mentioned. So by the time we get, I don't know if that would curtail up, but when the three or four years is up, a lot of these are not desirable, salvageable, so.
I don't think they existed when they told enforcement.
Starting to wonder.
Yeah, I don't know. I just wanted to write that as a comment that was made at the meeting, so throw that out there. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, and I think that, just to build on that, I was really excited to get some of these committees started, because I think it's a huge priority for most of us, if not all of us, on this, at this table, to, you know, not only fight blight, but to restore some of these properties back to the tax rolls, to find other uses, to be able to build businesses. And these committees hopefully will come with some answers, some solutions. Hopefully, the land bank will become a feasible project, because I think that it will really help. We need to look at different things now in order to, to deal with the issues that we're facing. And I think that that may be a good solution. So I'm kind of excited to explore that a little bit more. There's a lot of new growth, even as Penny mentioned over at Loring, what's good for them is good for us. And so I'm excited to see, you know, between Amazon, these new businesses, the growth. But we need to be in front of that by thinking of, how can we capture and capitalize on the people that are going to be coming to our area to live, to spend money, to send their kids to school. There's a lot of ways that they're going to impact us. And I know that I wasn't here prior when Loring was open, but I know that this place was booming. So it's on the forefront that it could be again. I definitely think it's going to be. So I don't want to be behind that. I want to be before it. I'm dealing with some of these blighted properties, some of the other issues that we deal with, and then just finding ways to, to build up housing, businesses, development, all the things. And I like you all. You guys are great people, so I'm glad to work with you. I like you all, too. Penny, I really, really like you.
Yeah.
Extra, huh?
She gets extra. She needs a little extra love. Extra love. She does a lot.
Extra star.
Yeah. Anyways.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Bagley?
I agree that the land bank is, is an exciting concept. I think it could be a very useful tool for us going forward in combating the, you know, the constraints that have been put on us by the state. It'll be a lot of work, but I think if we combine that with a policy to take deed in lieu of foreclosure, we can make it work really well. So I'm excited about that, and excited to work with you and Jody to make that a reality.
Me, too.
Thank you. I think the only thing that I would like to kind of go back and reiterate again, for people, it's great to have people in the community who are invested in learning about the projects that are going on, and who want to understand the processes that are taking place. Again, every meeting that we hold in the city for committees, and obviously the council meetings that we have, those are open to the public. Anybody can attend, anybody can listen. So I really encourage people to come and see what's going on, versus kind of saying, well, no one's telling me anything. The information's there, but you do have to seek it, too, and attend those meetings, and come ask your questions, because that's what we're here for. And I think it's really important for people in the community to know that, and to know that that's an option for everybody that is interested in whatever project is going on. Because I think that a lot of people have a lot of opinions, but if they don't come share them, we don't know what they are either. So that's all I have.
I have one thing that I probably should say. Thank you, Amazon, for choosing Caribou.
Yeah. Here we go.
That's awesome. That's awesome.
Yep.
I don't know that my husband thinks so.
You and my wife. You and my wife.
I'm excited.
Is she going to vibe?
Oh, don't even start. Don't even start. It's how I've become very familiar and on a first-name basis with FedEx and UBS. They even bring treats to the dog.
Wow, that's awesome.
That's awesome.
Candy.
Yep.
He just takes it to Paul's house.
That's right. There you go. Sorry I'm late. Don't tell your wife. I was being there tomorrow. I won't tell her.
Alrighty. Well, our next regular meeting is September 15th, 2025. We have no executive sessions on the docket for this evening. So what are the wishes of the council?
We have to go home now.
It's up to you, I mean.
Second, third, and fourth.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tario?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye.
You can't leave because you have to sign.
Class dismissed.
Oh, we got suspended.
Oh, you're not dismissed.
Yeah, you have six copies.
You can turn your microphones off.
Do you know what would be awesome? You know, on 7 Water Street, because the meeting's over. I didn't know how to bring it up, and I didn't want to kill any more time. But you know on 7 Water Street, you know where that burned out spot is?
Yep.
Once that's stabilized, it would be awesome if we just found a way to make a facade that blends in with the existing building.